Good morning and welcome to City Hall. We're going to get started with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Don Williams is the pastor at Rockwood Baptist Church. Don will lead us in the invocation. If everyone please stand. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman Greenwell if he'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Pastor?
Well, most gracious heavenly father, I thank you for the honor that you give these folks in conducting the business of the city. And I'm asking you to give them wisdom and guidance and your mercy and your grace as that business is being conducted. Thank you, Lord, in Jesus' name.
Please face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Each month, the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City helps us honor one teacher throughout the metro area as our Teacher of the Month. And I'm going to ask Lori Hag to come forward. Lori, come on forward. Let's show our appreciation to our Teacher of the Month. Find out a little more. Lori is a kindergarten teacher at West Nichols Hills Elementary School in the Oklahoma City Public School System. We have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas Lori Hag has been named Teacher of the Month for November 2015 by the Foundation for Oklahoma City Public Schools and Rotary Club of Oklahoma City. Whereas Lori has been an educator for eight years in the Oklahoma City Public Schools, two years at Martin Luther King Junior Elementary, and the past six years at West Nichols Hills Elementary. Whereas Lori received her bachelor's degree in early childhood education from the University of Central Oklahoma and graduated as a member of Phi Theta Kappa Educational Society. Whereas in recognition of her work as an educator, Lori was named the 2014-15 West Nichols Hills Teacher of the Year and won second place runner-up for the 2015 Oklahoma City Public Schools District Teacher of the Year. Whereas Lori is an instructor for the Great Expectations Program, helping educators provide a positive atmosphere, engage in classroom communities, and inspiring students to pursue academic success. Whereas Lori has shared her expertise and techniques at two of the district's professional development conferences as a presenter for supporting core knowledge, classroom management, and interactive read-alouds. Whereas Lori is also active on the discipleship and pastoral relations committee of her church, working to help children in the congregation and the community. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby recognize and commend Lori Hag on her selection as November 2015 Teacher of the Month by the Foundation for Oklahoma City Public Schools and the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City.
And we actually need to vote on this, Lori, so the suspense continues. Can I have a motion? And a second. Cast your votes. How about that? It's unanimous. Now you can show your approval.
Good morning and thank you so much, all of you that are here and city council members for honoring me today for my dedication and hard work. I encourage that you continue to support educators throughout the metro.
Thank you. Congratulations. Did you have the day off? You do. Great, great. Well, tell your kindergarteners hello for us tomorrow. All right. Next up, we have our annual holiday ornament to present. And where's Mike McCauley? I've lost him. Right over here. Mike, come on forward and bring your group. Once again, we have a Christmas ornament to announce that benefits the Oklahoma City Riverfront and all the efforts that go down there. I'm just going to hand the mic to Mike and let him go.
Thank you, Mayor and council, for allowing us to have a few minutes to tell you about the Christmas ornament program. This is the third in a series, and it does help support the River Foundation Fund and the annual Oklahoma City Holiday River Parade, which this year, thankfully with the forecast, this year it'll take place on Sunday, December 20th. Historically, it's been the Friday after Thanksgiving. This year, it'll be Sunday, December 20th. Of course, we could still have six inches of snow then, but that's when it's going to be this year. So, the sale of the ornament helps support all of those. Mayor, if you would like to help Emily there unveil the artwork. The artwork, this year we commissioned Greg Burns, and we'll hold it up and show it to the council members also, Emily. We commissioned Greg Burns, and Emily also helped me click the slides here of Greg. Greg couldn't be with us today, and Greg is an Oklahoma City treasurer, McGinnis graduate, OU graduate. Many of you familiar with Greg. He has participated in the Arts Festival for 35 years, starting from year one and did it for 35 years. And if we could just click through those, Mayor. Greg does the intricate work in ink, and then he follows up with watercolor by placing his paintbrush in his teeth, which just makes his talent and skills just totally amazing. So, we are happy to have Greg agree to do the artwork this year. We're happy to have the Oklahoma City Museum of Art represented by Richard Beener today as our ornament, as our artwork. And the ornaments are available in three exclusive locations: at North Pole City, our south location, at the museum gift store just across the street, and then thanks to the help of Jill Merritt, who is the marketing manager and manager of development at Penn Square Mall and the Simon Property Group. They are helping us out with the kiosk at Penn Square Mall. And so, in addition, First Step, which some of you are familiar with, the women of First Step will be selling the ornaments at the kiosk at Penn Square Mall. But money for those wages will go back to First Step to support First Step. So, it's a win-win situation for everybody. We encourage people to purchase the ornaments, companies, organizations, purchase the ornaments. They will also be available on sale online at OKCornament.com. And I think I about have it covered, Mayor. But again, we appreciate your time. We hope you all support the ornament program. We're excited about the ornament this year and all of our partners. And thank you, Mayor and council, for your time this morning.
And thank you, Mike. It's beautiful, and it looks like you've got a lot of great community partners. They're for sale north, south, and downtown Oklahoma City, and they go for great causes. Mike, thanks for all your work. All right, let's show our appreciation and honor of this. And we're on item three of the council agenda. I'll look for a motion on the appointments.
Move the items, second.
Okay. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item four is the Journal of Council Proceedings. For A is to receive the journal for November 10th, and for B is to approve the journal for October 27th.
Move the items, second.
Comments or questions on the journal? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And item five is requests for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, there's a couple this morning, starting on page 19 under item nine F1. Item D, 8309, Cinnamon Teal Drive. We ask that be stricken. The owner secured. Moving to page 20, item M, 819 Southwest Third Street. We ask that be stricken. The owner has secured. And item N, 1737 Northwest Eighth Street. We ask that be stricken. The owner has secured. Moving to item nine G1. Item D, 9309, Cinnamon Teal Drive. We ask that be stricken. The owner secured. Nine, I'm sorry, Q is 819 Southwest Third Street. We ask that be stricken. The owner has secured. And finally, item R, 1737 Northwest Eighth Street. We ask that be stricken. Again, the owner has secured.
Are there any other requests for uncontested continuances? All right, item six is revocable permits. We have three before us today. The first is in Ward Six. Is there anyone here representing the event called Turkey Tracks? Good morning. We'll need your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning. Don Garrett, 14420 South Meridian, Oklahoma City, 73170.
All right, Don, tell us about this event.
DG Productions has hosted this event each year downtown, starts at the post office and goes to the neighborhoods to the north. Have about 2,000 people. We raise toys and funds for the Toys for Tots Foundation, helping the Marines.
Great. And how can people sign up?
They can go to www.dgroadracing.com. Registration stays open until the gun starts, so you can sign up race day morning or any time between now and then.
Sounds like a great project.
It's a great way to spend a few calories before you go add some.
How about a motion on 6A? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Thanks, Don. All right, the second is a right-of-way use permit to hold the Bricktown Tree Lighting Festival. Is there anyone here from Downtown Oklahoma City Inc. that wants to talk about this? Oh, here comes, well, I see Gary Cox, but that's not your event, is it, Gary? You're here for something down the line. Well, okay, I'll talk about it, because I'll be there to help light the tree. This is Friday evening in Bricktown. Santa Claus will be there, and it's a great ceremony. There's nothing more humbling than standing next to Santa Claus and realizing nobody cares you're there, because everybody's excited that he makes his first appearance in Oklahoma City Friday night. How about a motion then to host the Bricktown Tree Lighting Festival Friday night with a motion and a second? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item C is a request to hold the Reindeer Run, and this will take place throughout Ward One and Two on December 5th. And Cynthia Willis is here. Cynthia?
Good morning, Mayor, and members of the council. And we're excited to again be hosting our Reindeer Run. This is our seventh year that we'll be hosting the Reindeer Run. It takes place around 4436 Northwest 50th, which is where our children's services and our administrative offices are. It's actually, the run is just south of there in primarily residential area. This year, we're anticipating around 300 runners, which is about how many we've been fortunate enough to average over the last seven years. And also this year, a little bit different than years past. In years past, our proceeds have benefited our mobile crisis services for children. And this year, we're actually benefiting our veteran services. We're going to have a color guard that we'll be presenting, and we're really excited about using the proceeds for our veteran services this year.
All right, and it's in Ward One and Two. Move the items. All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Wonderful, thank you.
Good luck. Thank you, Cynthia. All right, we'll recess the council meeting, convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There are three items.
Move the items.
All right, cast your votes on the MFA. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC-MFA, convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. Again, there are three items.
Move the items.
All right, comments or questions on the PPA? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC-PPA, convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. Just the payroll today.
Move the items.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCEAT, reconvene the council meeting with the consent document.
Move the items, second. Consideration, second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Yeah, Pete? Is that BD? And you want to pull that for a separate vote? Okay. Okay, you just want to discuss it. Okay.
We have a presentation on that, item two, by Doug Cooper.
Okay.
And then we also have a presentation on the consolidated plan, which is item... Okay. Item D, yes.
Okay. And John, did you want to speak?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Yes, Mr. Mayor. 7A-G. 7A-G.
All right, Pete, you want to talk before Doug makes his presentation or afterwards?
I can do that.
Okay. Doug, you want to come on up and make the presentation then on BD?
Good morning, Mayor. City Council, Doug Cooper, Director of Parks and Recreation. What we have before you today is a memorandum of understanding between the city of Oklahoma City, the City-County Health Department, and the city of Oklahoma City Public Schools. This is a facility that is planned to go into Southern Oaks to create a more robust learning and wellness campus down there at Southern Oaks. Over the last few decades, we've had a pretty good relationship with the metropolitan libraries who provide some quality programming for after-school and school breaks, as well as our recreation programs at the center. The City-County Health Department, who are here today as well, identify this area of the city as needing some improvement in the way of educating people how they can be healthier and live longer lives and have better family health and things along those lines. They've identified the Southern Oaks area as needing a venue for partners to collaborate, and it's a great location for education and training, and again, an innovative educational development for better academic outcomes. So, the three entities have been working for a little over a year to try to come to some logical conclusion, and we think that we have the starting document here as it relates to the MOU. The next slide shows what the campus may look like if the city council approves the MOU today so that we can continue working on this great program. In the middle, in the blue, you will see the design of what could be the building as it relates to the City-County Health Department. The school district has also been thinking about adding an additional gymnasium onto Parmalee School. So, we wanted to show how it might fit on our campus there to make for a better park and recreational venue with this learning and health facility in the mix of things. We think it's a great advantage, because as I've repeatedly said here before you all, I feel that the city of Oklahoma City is the largest healthcare provider in the city, and I think this takes us to the next step, especially at this location. Some of the programs and opportunities that we show here is fitness classes, walking trails, community gardens, better laid-out sports fields, and then on the educational side of it, teaching people how to have better cardiovascular or how to compete or combat cardiovascular disease, diabetes prevention, worksite wellness. You can read them for yourselves. Again, we think this is in our wheelhouse, and we're excited, the Parks and Recreation Department's excited about the opportunity that this might bring to this specific neighborhood, and it advances our own activities as well, and I think the school will benefit from it as well. Our next steps, we've already had six public meetings on this subject. Two of them were Board of Park Commissioners meetings, and then we actually had four neighborhood meetings with the community itself being invited. Our next steps, again, going forward, if the MOU is approved today, is we're going to have to coordinate the building and the road construction that is identified on the maps. We want to make sure that we continue to have additional public meetings to keep bringing the design criteriums back out into the community so they can see how it's coming together. They gave us some specific tasks that they wanted to see in this plan, and then further refine the partnerships and the agreements necessary to bring this to fruition. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I know Mr. White has also information to share.
Yeah, Pete, I know you've been working on this for quite some time.
Well, it really is a culmination of collaboration between lots and lots of people. A lot of them are here today. Some of them that were not mentioned in the presentation, that were involved in the collaboration that will get it to this point, were Oklahoma City Community College, University of Central Oklahoma. They were both, they're very interested in putting facilities on the campus there. We have a number of people here today that participated. I'm going to go ahead and read a list that I have of people that are here. If I didn't, if I missed you, well, I apologize ahead of time. Duane Mas with Mas Architects is here. From City-County Health is Dr. Gary Cox, Jackie Shawnee, Dave Cox, and Dr. Steve Cagle. From the school board is Scott Randall, and a guy I've just known for a little while, a school board member, Ron Milliken. And from the library is Tim Rogers is here. There are probably others that I missed. I've just watched you come in and tried to make a list as I went along. But the thing I'm most pleased about this, and I recognize there's still some pushback in the neighborhood, change always brings some pushback, but the thing that I'm most pleased about this is the degree of collaboration between agencies, all of whom do good things for Oklahoma City, but rarely do they do it together. I think there's going to be a lot of synergy brought to the table by bringing all these agencies to the same spot, and I'm looking forward to it being a model that we might use in the future when we do things like this, because it's just been very, very rewarding to see all these disparate public agencies come together and work as hard as they have. Again, we've already had a meeting to try to work out timing on when the road construction will happen in relation to the school's academic year, in relation to the construction of the facility that City-County Health is going to be there, also looking into the possibility of acquiring more parkland around it. It is a living organism, and I'm hoping it'll be everything that all of us that have put a lot of time in it dream that it will be. I want to personally thank everybody that's been involved in it. It has not been easy. We've had some public meetings that were not, well, they were open meetings where a lot of things were discussed, and sometimes those get, I don't suppose any other people on the council have ever had a public meeting where everybody didn't agree with that, but they were very rewarding in the end. It's come out very well. So, I want to personally thank all of you for your participation.
I want to note, Oklahoma County Commissioner Brian Monn entered the room, and of course, the county's been very much a part of this. Gary, did you want to say anything about the clinic? Gary Cox runs the City-County Board of Health, and they've been instrumental, and look at this as a wonderful opportunity to work with some neighborhoods that have struggled on health issues for many, many years. Gary?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. First, we'd just like to second what Councilor White has said. This is just an outstanding collaboration of partners that have come together to really provide a richness of services that the South Oklahoma City area has not seen to date, and it's going to be an excellent model for the future. So, we'd just like to thank Councilor White and his leadership in taking the lead here, as well as City Manager Jim Couch, and the mayor as well. So, we just appreciate everything you've done. This is going to be a tremendous effort. This is really an opportunity to go to the schools and to the kids and their families and really work with them in a holistic method so that we can bring a lot of services to them. It's going to be a difference maker in South Oklahoma City.
Yeah, it is. You can't fix every problem on the same day, but this is a significant step toward continuing to address the health needs of the community.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
And taking care of some access issues. So, thank you, Gary, for your involvement, everybody Pete mentioned as well.
Mayor, I think it's interesting to hear what Gary said, because if you ask each of the entities to come up here, they would share to you, with you, something very similar to what he said, except they would be sharing it with regard to education, or with regard to libraries, or with regard to higher education, or with regard to parks and recreation. I think it's just a classic, I hope ultimately, that it will be the classic collaboration between entities that don't have a history of all working together.
All right.
So, I mean, if you got the community college up here, they'd tell you what a great opportunity they think it is to groom young junior college students to go on to be educators in the public schools, in the inner-city public schools. If you had OCU up here, they'd tell you the same thing. The library people would tell you the very same thing about opening the library up to a broader, it's just, it's got a synergy to it that I'm anxious to see it work out.
Me too. Anybody else on council want to speak to this item? All right. John, you wanted to address item AG.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. AG is agreement with the Board of County Commissioners of Oklahoma County to do a street resurfacing on Northeast 50th Street from Northwest Minister Road to North YC Road not to exceed $421,458.35. And so, I just want to thank Oklahoma County for doing a joint project to resurface roads in eastern part of Oklahoma County, eastern part of Ward Seven. Thank you.
All right, thank you, John.
And we do have a presentation on the 2015 Continuum of Care Federal Grant Funds Application Process. Jared Shady is here to make that presentation.
Okay.
Good morning. I'm Jared Shady with the Oklahoma City Planning Department, Community Development Division. I administrate the homeless programs for the city. And we're here to talk about the Continuum of Care today. That's on the agenda, next slide. Continuum of Care, this program is a little bit bigger than just a grant. It's actually a name that designates for a group of service providers in a given sort of designated area. Almost every major city in the United States has one. The full body of our Continuum of Care is, we take to be the Coalition in Poverty. That's a planning group of nearly every service provider in the city that meets at the Homeless Alliance every second Thursday of the month, excuse me. But our full funded membership is made up by these 17 organizations at the top. I say funded, it's not just by this grant, it's by every social service grant that comes through our office. We have three that are federal and one that comes from the city. Of those programs, the continuum program is our largest. All the programs have a different service focus. The service focus of the continuum program is permanent supportive housing. That is permanent housing for individuals or families with disabilities or disabled family member, and support services and case management. I'll give a little more detail on that in a second. But we also fund one transitional housing provider. It's very similar, except it's not permanent. It's limited to two years, and it has higher barriers. Also funds our homeless management information system, and we do intake for clients. We store all their information in this so we can track their housing progress and keep their case management records paperless. We also, and also that funds our coordinated intake, which is our 211, Heartline 211. People can contact Heartline for an intake, and they can direct them to a service provider. And we also fund a healthcare provider. Under the permanent supportive housing, though, one of the key things that it funds is case management for those clients. That's extremely important to keeping them in housing. Most of these people have been in the street for a long time. Some of them need a lot of help just learning how to readjust to a housing situation again, or even just keep a schedule. This can cause a lot of problems with landlords. The landlords can contact these case managers, and the case manager can help alleviate those problems to keep them from getting evicted. Our continuum joined the 100,000 Homes program in 2012. That program is now morphed into something called Zero 2016. Our local name for it is Journey Home OKC. What this program emphasizes is housing all your medically vulnerable, chronically homeless and veterans, all the ones you can find anyway, using a housing-first approach. And the goal is to do, have veterans done by the end of 2015. We're a little behind on that. And chronically homeless by the end of 2016. Now, what housing first means, you're going to move these people into housing right from the street or shelters into housing without any preconditions. And we detect medically vulnerable by doing an assessment with them that goes over a pretty comprehensive list of health issues and then scores that. And chronically homeless tend to have the most of those issues, because they've been on the street the longest. Chronically homeless means they've got more than a year on the street, or they've been homeless more than three times in the past four years. Since joining the program in 2012, we've It's not very common success with this population, so it wasn't all achieved with this funding, but it was sizably achieved with this funding, and it would not have been possible without it, and we certainly won't be able to maintain the momentum without it. Just wanna go over three of our clients here who have been housed since 2012. Robert was on the street for over a year. He was almost suicidal by the time he was housed. He has since, yeah, obviously has a roof over his head, but he works for the Curbside Chronicles, able to pay all of his expenses, and has gone back to school at OKC, OSU, to finish his education as of this fall. Calvin was permanently injured at his last job, and also has a record of incarceration. He ended up on the street for about two years. He was recently housed. He's the Chronicle's bestseller. For anyone who's not familiar, Curbside Chronicles are a street newspaper. And he's able to pay all of his expenses with that as well. He's also an artist, and makes items out of leather. He makes belts and bags and things of that nature. He's started doing that again since he's gotten a roof over his head. James and Sandra, James is a veteran. James used to panhandle while he was on the street. He was homeless. He found that to be something that he thought was, I guess, a little demeaning, so he decided to join the Chronicle, and he's been selling that. They were recently housed, and he is now on his way to becoming a mechanic, I believe. And I think that's all. Any questions?
All right. Questions?
The, when is the, when would we know whether we get this grant or not?
It usually takes about six months for us to find out our actual amounts, and they'll tell us which ones got funded, which ones don't. We usually get them all funded. We're a very good continuum. Our record is pretty good. So it probably will not be a problem, but we never know, and it's like waiting on pins and needles for six months.
It just seems to me that this is a much more compassionate idea with regard to the problems that we have with the homeless, as opposed to criminalizing street solicitation. It just, it just makes sense to me that this is something that works. We, it doesn't work for everybody, nothing works for everybody. Panhandling will never be curtailed in Oklahoma City until people quit giving them money. I mean, that's, that's a real solution. But this is a kind of, this is the kind of direct approach to the needs themselves, it seems to me, that make really good sense. And I, I want to let you know how much I appreciate the effort that went into preparing the application, and how much I support it, because it just, it is, it is a solution that makes long-term sense.
It has so far.
Thank you.
Yeah, Ed?
I appreciated you using the three examples and putting it face with, with the statistics. What, all three, I guess, were using the Curbside Chronicle. Can you talk about how many people, or how integral that is to your success rate, or how many people are using that to provide?
I don't, I'd have to talk to Rania Ferguson, the founder of Curbside, to know how many actually in the homeless program are using it, or have used it in the past, because not everyone, obviously, continues to use it. Some people have moved out of, either moved technically out of homelessness. They may need still services, but they may not be working for the Curbside anymore. They may have found another source of employment. One person last week did that. So I'd have to actually talk to her to get those numbers. But, I mean, 750 people, I can't imagine, it would probably end up being a small percentage, but it's significant to the people who are probably the most successful, I would think, but I don't know for sure. I'd have to ask.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions here on this item? All right. Thanks very much. And Joe Sarge Nelson has signed up to speak on a series of consent docket items. Joe, you want to come forward?
I'm going to go forward.
Okay. Thanks, Joe. All right, ready to vote the consent docket? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Thanks, everybody. We're on to the concurrence docket now. Any comments or questions from council here? I have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And that puts us down to item nine. These are items that require a separate vote. The first is a series of zoning cases, and we'll start in Ward 4 with an ABC issue at 5801 Southeast 74th Street. Pete?
Is there anyone signed up to speak?
No one has signed up. We're discussing the ABC issue at 5801 Southeast 74th Street?
That is me.
Okay. Are you the applicant?
I am.
Okay.
Might help you take that hat off. If there aren't, if there aren't any objections, I move approval.
All right. Cast your votes. You're good. Thanks for coming down.
Thank you.
Item 9A2.
Wasn't intended to be funny.
Zoning case in Ward 8. The address is 3600 Northwest 164th Street. It would be moving in from one PUD to another. Mark?
Yeah, right after city council meetings start, staff informed me that there's an issue that's come up with this ordinance and application, and it needs to be referred back to the planning commission. So if it's procedurally correct, I'd make a motion that it be referred back to planning commission.
I talked to the applicant, and they want to do an amendment, and the councilman felt it'd be better for the planning commission to see it again.
All right, well, let's do it, then. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes, and we're sending that one back to planning. Item 9A3 is a zoning case in Ward 8 at 10501 Northwest 122nd Street. It's currently double A, and it would become a planned unit development if approved. Mark?
Sundance is trying to expand its operations, including residential use. I have personally done some work on the expansion of the aircraft and to avoid any appearances. I think it'd be best if I recuse myself, and James has been kind enough to handle this matter for me.
Okay.
I'll excuse myself at this time.
Has anybody signed up for this? Okay. Well, it was unanimous approval by the planning commission. There haven't been any protests. Like Mark said, it's just an expansion for Sundance Airport, so I move for approval.
All right. Cast your votes. It passes 7-0. Item 9A4 is also in Ward 8 at 3000 Northwest 150th Street. It's currently our one single-family residential, and it would become a new simplified planned unit development. Mark?
I'm calling this Ward 8 Day. This is, came for the planning commission. There is no opposition. It was recommended for approval, and I'd move the item.
All right. Anyone here hoping to speak on this item? 9A4? All right. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And 9A5 is a zoning case in Ward 7 at 3500 North Lindsey Avenue. It's currently our one single-family, and it would become a new spud if approved. John?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I see Scott has left, but what this is, it is to rezone, to allow the school district to have, to turn this school, existing school, into their central district enrollment center. And so I do want to thank the school district for deciding to still have this building in, in operation, and turn it into a central enrollment center. So again, thank you, and again, to Oklahoma City Public Schools, and especially to Scott Randall for his hard work. Not everybody at the school district is easy to work with, and Scott Randall has been definitely easy to work with for his partnering up. And so, again, thank you.
All right. So John's made a motion on item 9A5. Is there a second?
Second. Mayor, I'd like to make a comment on it also. This is not totally, but partially a result of the continuing meetings that the city has with the Board of Education about trying to find ways to, to simplify and streamline their services in addition to doing something with abandoned buildings that I'm sure have been a problem for John and his ward. And this is just an example of some of that work that's coming out of that committee. I wouldn't want to take total credit for it, but it was, it's the kind of things that have been discussed. They think it's gonna streamline their operation in order to give people a one-stop-shop for enrollment. If you've got a kindergartner and a eighth grader, you can go to the same spot and enroll both of them in, in the school, so you don't have to go to each separate school to do it. So it's, it's just kind of a sign of progress from streamlining the operations of item nine.
All right. We're gonna vote on item 9A5. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9B is a zoning case in Ward 8. This was recommended for denial, and, Mark, we have one person that signed up to speak, and Kelly's watching the microphone. Do you want to talk first, or do you want to hear from Kelly?
I'll turn it over to Kelly, but I would want to say one thing real quick. I know there was some controversy with this ordinance, and this was a process and procedure where a lot of people came together and, and worked hard to come up with a solution between the landlord, the tenant, and the homeowners association, and I thought it was a very positive effort, and I look forward to hearing from Kelly.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, councilmen, and thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Kelly Work, and I am here representing the applicant for this ABC2 restaurant with alcohol zoning overlay. This is at the location there, as you see, at 11109 North May Avenue. It's just on the north of Hefner Road and on the west side of May Avenue. This location was formerly, most recently, a Taco Cabana restaurant, which, which did serve beer and, I think, a 3-2-based margarita for many years. As you all know, the ABC2 restaurant overlay requires that the facility be operated as a restaurant, and must have at least 50% of the sales that they generate from food. We have, there are a number of persons here present today relating to this application. Jeff Rogers is the owner of the restaurant. He's present. His general manager is a gentleman by the name of Kevin Chrysler, who's been working in Oklahoma City for many years in restaurant operations as a manager. Also, Rick Russell, who owns the building, is present today. And as Councilman Stonecifer referenced, we have met with and spoken on numerous occasions with representatives of the Quail Creek Homeowners Association. Quail Creek, of course, is just to the west of this area. They've visited the restaurant and toured the facility, and have advised us that they do not have an objection to the ABC2 application. There was an issue that arose at the planning commission that was raised by the Oklahoma City Police Department, and Lieutenant Doug Kimberlin with the Oklahoma City Police Department is here today. And since the planning commission, we met at the restaurant with Major Bill Weaver and with Lieutenant Kimberlin in an effort to both get them the information that they needed with regard to this restaurant operation, and also to answer some questions and concerns that, that they had had. And we, we did a modification to the floor plan of the, of the restaurant based on some of the concern that the Major Weaver and Lieutenant Kimberlin had raised. I know Lieutenant Kimberlin has been back to the restaurant since we did that modification to inspect it, and, and I think he may desire to address you all this morning about that. This property has been used for many years as a restaurant that served alcohol before Taco Cabana was there. There was another building that, that housed the Don Serapio's Mexican restaurant, which also served alcohol for many years. The restaurant, this new concept, Pink Parrot, is essentially hamburgers and tacos and very casual dining. It's probably in the same market niche as the Garage and the S&amp;B Burger joint restaurants that are opening up at various locations around town. We presently are open without serving alcohol. We're currently losing sales for that reason, that we are unable to compete in that way. We would certainly be able to generate more sales and to be able to hire more people with the ABC2 overlay that we are requesting today. And because we are open for business, we are requesting that if the council is inclined to adopt the zoning ordinance today, approving the ABC2, we would make the request that it be made effective immediately with the adoption of the emergency clause. That would certainly help us to make the restaurant successful, and I think it would also serve the public welfare in the sense that it will generate more sales tax revenue, and it will permit us to hire more people. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you, that you may have.
Okay. Thanks, Kelly. Mark?
Yeah, and I specifically want to thank Chief City, Major Weaver, Lieutenant Kimberlin, who's here today, and I'd like everybody to hear from the lieutenant, so we can have a fully informed decision on this.
Okay.
I'm Lieutenant Kimberlin with the Vice Enforcement Unit. We review a lot of the ABC applications as they come in to make sure that they conform with state law, and there's no criminal activity that we believe would be associated with that application, which is how that originally came to us. And one of the things that we were concerned about was the conversion of this business to an after-hours club environment after 2:00. So as, since, if a restaurant is licensed as such under state law, then they can remain open 24 hours. And we have had an issue with some after-hours clubs or restaurants trying to convert to that club atmosphere after 2:00. So when we, when we began to look at this, that was the concern that we expressed to Chief City, and, and that's what prompted the, our appearance at the commission meeting when this was first presented. Since then, we have met with the applicant. We expressed our concerns to him, and he has systematically addressed every one of those. The main one is the conversion of the restaurant into a club atmosphere after, after hours or the evening hours on a Friday and Saturday night. To prevent that, he, he did obtain a occupancy load that is consistent with tables and chairs, so he can only let 99 people in there, which is not real consistent with a club atmosphere. And he also bolted some tables and chairs down, or tables, I'm sorry, to the actual floor, so they can't be moved, to show that he, he doesn't have the intent to convert to a, a club-type atmosphere. He, he has spent quite a lot of money on a restaurant, which is not consistent with that either. They typically won't spend about $35,000 on a, on a, on a kitchen if that's their intent. They just serve prepackaged type food. So in, in working with them, they did address all of those concerns, and that was sent forward to Chief City, which I think is what prompted him to withdraw the concerns that we had expressed at the planning commission meeting.
I haven't heard the, I'm sorry, I just, I hadn't heard that 24-hour thing before. Can you explain what makes something eligible to stay open 24 hours?
Under state law, if a restaurant that serves alcohol is licensed as such by the Able Commission under the ABC Act, then at 2:00, they can secure that alcohol and lock that bar up, but they can remain open. And we do have a couple venues, several venues, that have tried that, and it typically causes a significant law enforcement issue when they try to convert to an after-hours, after 2:00 AM type club atmosphere. We haven't had, we haven't had a true after-hours club survive in Oklahoma City. We're just not that type of venue yet, where we have that late-night activity going on, nor do we have the venue where it's gonna go on for more than about three days a week. So the, the conversion of a restaurant into that club activity atmosphere typically causes some issues on the police side with law enforcement and significant responses to activity at those places.
Thank you. Mark?
Yeah. Kelly, can you come up and speak to the emergency clause? I think the one thing that persuaded me to support this was that when the HOA, Brian Ferguson, Scott Sullivan, and others worked really hard with the applicant, was that the desire not to have an empty building, which had been empty for quite some time, and have a functioning business that employs people and does create sales tax revenue. And so I'd like to hear a little bit more about the emergency clause and why you think that's necessary.
Yes, sir. Well, the, we opened the restaurant on October 23rd, so we're there and open for business presently, without alcohol, serving food. The, we're experiencing presently, on a daily basis, people who are coming in the front door, and then when they learn that they're unable to get a beer or a mixed beverage, will turn around and go out the door. And that is happening on a daily basis. So it's, it, it will significantly put us in a better position to be successful if we're able to do that. And I understand the ordinance becomes effective if it is adopted today without the emergency in 30 days, but we, it would put us in a much better position if we could get fully staffed up and be in a position to, to offer. And I understand the ordinance becomes effective if it is adopted today without the emergency in 30 days, but we, it would put us in a much better position if we could get fully staffed up and be in a position to offer alcoholic beverages with the food in that interim period. And I understand that it's, it will require seven of nine votes from the council, but it would certainly help us be successful, and we would request it.
All right. Pete and Larry want to speak on the emergency?
I have a, you want to go first?
All right.
I have a concern about the emergency clause. Emergency clause doesn't really have anything to do, Kelly, with economic development. What it has to do with is preserving the right of protesters to file a lawsuit to stop it. I'm more interested in whether or not the protest has completely gone away. If it has, I can support the emergency, especially in a situation that's been postponed as often as this one has, both at the Planning Commission level and at this level. I don't have a problem with it. What I oppose on the emergency is if there are people remaining as protesters, it cuts off their right to file a lawsuit, and I think that's what it's about. And I can be supportive. I'm typically not, as you probably know, supportive of, but I can be if I can be assured that there are no protesters remaining.
I can tell you this. I've had numerous phone calls with several people, and I am not aware of any protester in existence or any protester here today.
Okay.
Certainly no protest has been filed.
My personal feelings about the emergency clause don't have anything to do with economic development. They have to do with preserving a protester's right to appeal our decision. That's, and if there are no protesters left, I'm good with the.
Okay.
I can tell you their county beverage permit has been issued. State law requires a 15-day period for that very reason, because the county beverage permit is not tied to a certificate of compliance, so.
Yeah, I was, that was going to be my other question.
There would have been opportunities for protest during that licensing process, and there were none.
I'm sorry. I, my next question was going to be, are we in compliance with all county and other state laws?
We are. We've, all of our licenses have been issued. We will be required, of course, to get a license from the city once the zoning ordinance is effective, and that's all that we're lacking at present. And we're not aware of any protest. We've met with the president of the, Brian Ferguson, who's the president of the Quail Creek Homeowners Association, as recently as Thursday last week, and he advised us he's not aware of any protest, and he's not stating any objection.
As a matter of public policy, I find it really difficult to say that I'm going to put my full trust in two lawyers here, but I'm going to vote, I'll vote for the emergency.
Okay. Larry?
Thank you, Kelly. I hope you don't take this personal, and Bob knows probably what I'm going to say. If you come up, Bob, I have a case right now that was brought to me by a very reputable restaurant in Oklahoma City. I'm not going to name it right now, and they thought that they had a legitimate reason, which goes back to exactly the logic that you're talking about, employing people, economic development, sales tax, et cetera, to get around the fact of the 30-day waiting period after an overlay is approved. And we told them, and Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, you passed along the fact that this council in the past had exercised some judgment and said that the emergency needed to be kind of curtailed, that we were getting over the edge on giving too many people emergency status. And so I told them just this week that this was not going to be approved, and so I cannot approve it for that reason, because I think this is going to open up a floodgate of people saying that there's an emergency. Yes, you're going to lose some money, but that's, I think, secondary to the fact that we should not approve this emergency. So I'm going to vote no for it for that reason.
I understand. I completely agree with Larry. I mean, you couldn't possibly know that there's no protesters, and if our policy is that we're going to ask the applicant whether there's any protesters, you just couldn't know that. I just think that's bad public policy. And so in no way does this meet any of the guidelines that Kenny Jordan outlined for us in our presentation. It's not a public welfare issue or a public health issue or an emergency under any of the guidelines that he delineated. And so in no way could I support an emergency. I absolutely, I support the application, but in no way does this meet the guidelines for an emergency.
All right. Well, we'll have two separate votes on the issue. Mark, you want to make a motion on the item, item 9B?
I move the item.
All right. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Mark, do you want to make a motion on the emergency?
I'd make the motion.
Okay. Is there a second on the emergency? All right. And cast your votes, and the emergency fails 5-3. It requires seven votes. Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right. We're on to item 9C, and Cindy Richards is here to give us an update on this item. It's just being introduced today, and we're besetting a public hearing for December 8th that has to do with truancy.
Good morning, Mayor, council members. Recently, municipal prosecutors in the county and municipal police chiefs in the county received a letter from our district attorney, David Prater, asking us to look into the prosecution of adult parents and guardians on truancy matters for their children. I think, I'm not telling tales out of school, to say that his office has suffered some significant budget cuts, and he's looking for places where, you know, he can do his job and still make sure that all the loose ends are tied up. And fortunately, municipalities are able to take care of this issue and prosecute parents and guardians. We just haven't because the district attorney has traditionally handled that. So the ordinance before you will make it an offense for a parent or adult guardian to neglect or refuse to cause or compel attendance of a child from 5 to 18 years of age. There are, of course, certain defenses that are set out by statute, which we are also adopting in this ordinance, and ultimately, the penalty section makes each day that the child is truant an offense. It treats the first offense as a Class A, which would be a fine of up to $500, and second or subsequent offenses would be a Class B offense, which can go up to $1,200 and/or 180 days in jail. So that is the ordinance in a nutshell.
Are you saying if a kid misses a day of school, his parents can be held liable for a $500 fine?
I don't think, the maximum that you can receive is a $500 fine. It would fall under miscellaneous offenses in our ordinance that's in Chapter 33, which would make it come out to about $160 if they went and paid it at the counter on the first So no, it wouldn't necessarily be $500.
I see. Okay. Any other comments or questions? Item just being introduced today, and there'll be a public hearing.
Your Honor, I do have a question.
Where people can come express opinions. Yeah, David?
Excuse me. But again, what you bring up, for a student to miss one day of class, subjects their parent or guardian to this fine, I'd like to hear a little bit more as to when do, would the city begin monitoring this in an attempt to assess the fine? Is it just one day? Because I know of people, back when I went to school, who missed a day of school.
Currently, under state statute, that's already the law. On the first day that a child is absent from school, that is not excused by either terms of the statute or terms of the school attendance, then yes, that's a truancy, and the parent or adult guardian is held liable. Now, there are certain defenses to that. If there's an emergency situation, religious holidays, military honors funeral, or joint agreements between the school principal and the parent for those who are over 16 years of age.
Excuse me. So at, upon reaching 16, the parent is no longer responsible?
No. If the parent and the school principal reach a joint agreement that this over 16-year-old doesn't have to attend school, and then the parent also has to maintain custody of that child and responsibility.
So assuming the child fails to notify the parent or guardian that they missed school, you know, the parent is still subject to the fine?
Subject to the fine, you know, that doesn't take away any of their defenses to come to court and tell a judge, I sent my kid off to school and he didn't end up showing up there. You know, that's certainly up to the judge's discretion on a finding of guilt.
Yeah. You know, just some clarification for the general public. You know, we've started this more aggressive stance toward truancy a few years ago to try and address the dropout situation. The feeling is that if you can catch a kid early in truancy, you may decrease the chance that that kid will ultimately drop out, and the school district has been very supportive. Our police are generally using these laws as a tool, you know, to get a parent's attention, that they have a responsibility to help get that kid in school. And I think the council's concern is likely to be, you know, are we going to be overzealous in fining some well-meaning parent who just, for whatever reason, is having trouble getting their kid into school or to get them to follow through, you know, once they leave the house? I don't suspect we've had trouble in that. I haven't had a single parent come up to me and complain about the police behavior and getting on their porch when truancy begins. And so I'm guessing, since we're several years into this program, that we're not overstepping our bounds and starting to fine people who, you know, who may be doing the best they can.
Right, Mayor. MT Berry City Manager's Office, the police department has been, actually started this program with the district attorney's office several years ago, and it's been a very successful program. While the law would allow them to charge a parent after one absence, in reality, they look at more than one absence. We're verifying right now, but we think it's around four or five absences or more when, before the police department actually gets involved in trying to get the kid back in school. They also work with the parents, they work with the school to try to get the child back in before taking any enforcement action. Generally, enforcement action is a last resort to get a parent to get the child back into class.
There's also a funding question here. You know, every day a kid misses school, the school district doesn't get the funding from the state.
This is true.
And so, you know, it starts to add up when you have, you know, over 70 schools in a district. You know, if we can encourage those kids to get in class, there's also, you know, kind of a financial motive for the district, and we all know how underfunded, you know, the district is and our schools in general, so.
Okay, yeah.
And again, this is just being introduced today.
Right, and it's to continue what we believe has been a very successful program of getting parents to make sure that their children are in school. We've had some success over the years, and we'd like to continue it now within city court as opposed to a district.
All right. Any other comments or questions from council?
Mayor, this is just implementation of the state ordinance at the municipal level, which we're entitled to do. The DA's office, based on the wisdom of the legislature, has been defunded to the point it can no longer finance funding of this activity. All we're doing is moving that to the municipal level. Is that, isn't that correct?
That's correct. And Chief McDonald just informed me that the schools don't even notify OCPD until there are five unexcused absences, so.
We're just moving this function so we can continue what's been a successful program. We're going to, as with a lot of things with the way that state has chosen to finance things, it's going to, more and more things are going to fall to municipalities to determine whether or not we're going to continue these programs, and this is just a perfect example of that.
Mayor, I can also tell you that we've met with Judge James, who is the juvenile judge in municipal court, and she intends to have these cases set on her docket, so hopefully, if there's a problem with the juvenile and we also have the parent, she can run those through concurrently, and if we have services to send the parent and child to together, we can make that happen more easily.
And, Your Honor, I didn't mean to indicate that I'm supportive of truancy. I recognize it as a problem, and the comment that the school districts don't turn that information over until there's been five unexcused absences makes me feel more comfortable in pursuing this type of ordinance, so thank you.
All right. Well, the ordinance being introduced today is being planned to have a public hearing on December 8th in these chambers during the council meeting. How about a motion then to introduce the item today?
Move the item.
All right. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9D is also being introduced today, and this would create some changes to our retirement programs.
Wiley Williams is here to, and Renee Chapman is here.
Just real quickly, Wiley Williams from the city attorney's office. This is some changes to the ordinance required by IRS regulations. Unfortunately, this time of year is when we find out about the changes from our tax lawyer in Colorado, and so we have to rush to get them in by the end of the year so they're in effect for January 1. The changes are subtle. It's requiring, if a person wants to pay back or buy back time that they left the city and then they come back, we have to limit it to non-Roth plans, that they want to transfer money from another pension plan. It has to be a non-Roth plan, and that's the changes that are there.
All right. Is there a motion to introduce this item today?
Move the item.
All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously, and a public hearing has been set for December 8th. All right. Item 9E is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9E? All right. Move a motion. Is there a second? Okay. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9F is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9F? All right. How about a motion? Are you confused about where we are on the council agenda? Now, if you want to pull that microphone down, we'll be able to hear you better.
I have a property at 2805 and 1/2 South Harvey.
All right. Okay, so that's on the dilapidated list. Let's go ahead and.
And it's under abandoned also.
Oh, it is?
But it's not, yes, I have water service and trash service there, but the back part is what's bad, on the back part on the roof, and I hired a gentleman that came from out of state, and he tore the, started tearing the whole roof off, and I didn't request him to do that, and that's why it's in such bad structure.
Hmm. So you own the property?
I have a gentleman that's going to work on it this month and try to repair that roof.
Okay. Pete, it's in Word 4.
I tend to believe they ought to leave it on the list. Mr. Locke will work with you if you actually get started in restoring the building. He could give you more time to continue to do that, but it looks to me it's in such bad shape that if something doesn't done, it isn't done soon, it's going to become an even worse problem. So if you've got somebody that's ready to start to work on it, if you'll just meet with this gentleman right here at the microphone afterward, he will talk to you about working out a schedule for, of improvements to it. But you've got to, you've got to clean it up, you've got to start to work on it. It's just not safe the way it is with all the windows broken out of it. It's just not, you wouldn't want to live next door to it.
So I, are you saying I don't have any time, timeframe that I could extend it?
30 days. You'll have 30 days from today to get started. If you make an agreement with Mr. Locke during that 30 days, he'll monitor your progress, and as long as steady progress is being made, you'll continue to have time to do it. Is that right, Charles?
Yes.
That's the best we can do.
All right.
All right.
My son is one, he's on the property listing too, and he talked to Charles Long, so, and we thought maybe we could do something through him, because I know he had worked with the construction area, so.
Yeah, well, all we're looking for is some improvement, so if you'll, if you'll just work with Charles and satisfy Charles that you're actively working on this to improve it and taking away the safety issues for the rest of the neighborhood.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I believe we're on F, 9F, unsecured structures. Is there a motion there?
Move the item.
All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9G is a public hearing regarding abandoned buildings. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9G? All right. How about a motion?
Move the item.
Cast your votes. 9G, passed unanimously. 9H, understand we do need executive session?
That's correct.
All right. A motion to move 9H into executive session?
Move the item.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. 9J is claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9I? Claims recommended for denial? All right. How about a motion?
Move the item.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 10A is claims recommended for approval. How about a motion here?
Move the item.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 11 is items from council, and Pete, are you going to be speaking on item 11BN, 11AMB?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
It's on date of introduction, but it is really just an extension of what we attempted to do three or four years ago with regard to the regulation of smoking. What we intend to do is take it out to the edge of what the city's ability to control the locations where people could smoke. We were preempted by the legislative. We were preempted by the legislature. Later, they realized that they had gone further, perhaps than they even intended to do, and so we're just taking it back out so we can eliminate smoking on parking, I mean, on parks and trails, basically, in addition to... We intended to do that in the beginning. Legislature said we couldn't do it on anything other than inside of buildings that we own. So we did it on those things. We put up those signs in parks, which were really to discourage smoking. You remember, went through that process of trying to decide which sign was most discouraging without saying it was a violation of the law? Well, now it will be a violation of the law. We have got, we added trails because we've had a number of complaints about in one particular location where people congregate along a trail to smoke. And it's the whole concept of using that as a smoking spot. When you're, it's an outdoor activity, health spot is kind of contraindicated, so that's what it's about. It's really not any intention, the first ordinance. But it also, we also included the control of vaping for minors, which is the legislature, which this just mirrors what the legislature has done themselves. And we feel that they will, it will not be adverse to their way of looking at regulation for us to just do it ourselves.
Yeah, so when vaping was introduced, there was a discussion about whether or not this was smoking or whether or not it was not smoking.
Right.
And our view is legally, it is the same thing. Is that generally what you're...
To the extent the legislature permits us to do it. It's for people under the age of 18, I believe. Is that right, Cindy?
Yeah.
It's only for people under the age of 18.
All right, and these items are just being introduced today?
They're just being introduced today.
And the public hearing would be set for December 8th, and then a final hearing is scheduled currently for December 22nd.
Can I ask a question? First, I want to thank Pete for taking the lead on this and doing this. It's, I think it's very important, secondhand smoke. It's not just that it's a carcinogen, it's just it impacts people with pulmonary disease. You have asthma, allergies, it sets them off, even outdoors. It's protecting the public health, and I really appreciate Pete giving this in. I guess one question I'd ask, is there, is there a need to exempt? What would be exempted? Golf courses and maybe just golf course?
I think that might be it, Cindy.
The exemptions that are currently drafted into this amendment would be golf courses, racetracks, and casinos that are licensed by the Oklahoma Horse Racing Commission, which, to not hide the ball, I believe that's only Remington Park at this point in time. And it exempts city streets, sidewalks, and alleyways unless they lie within park property.
Unless, so if they're in park property...
Then you can't smoke on them.
Well, I'm just asking the council, I mean, is there, would there be a reason to exempt golf courses?
Well, a couple, one I've never received in a complaint about golf courses, and I think the, for one thing. Secondly, I think the risk is minimal since the way golf is played, small groups, 300 yards apart or 200 yards apart, it's difficult to quantify that as a significant health hazard. But bottom line is, after the experience of all the trouble that we went to as a council and I went through personally trying to get it passed the first time, I look at smoking much more like a foot-long hot dog now than I did. I'm willing to take it a bite at a time. I tried to go and take it to the edge the first time, and the council supported that. And what we saw was pushed back from big tobacco at the legislature. And I don't want to do that. I just want to get something I can pass. There's another thing that's probably more significant that I did not include. We have some ability to regulate, at least the federal government believes, they have the ability to regulate smoking in certain types of government-funded housing. And we're gonna look into that, but I don't want to tie it all in one bundle. I want to get done what I can get done. And I can understand that you're concerned about it, because part of the, part of the ability to curtail smoking has been, there's been two ways it's been done. Well, three, really. But the two I believe that work the best are raising the tax on cigarettes, which makes it more expensive. And the second one is making it more difficult, making it more uncomfortable to smoke, where nobody, you can't smoke, you gotta go outside, you gotta do this, you gotta do that. I think those things have worked more better than the secession program, frankly. I don't have any way to measure that, but I just know from observation that I think they work better than the secession program. And I'm just trying to take another step in that direction.
Well, if it's a, I mean, we have parks that are spread out, just like golf courses. If it's a, if it's a political consideration, I mean, my son loves golf. He wants to go every day. I'd like him to be protected there as much as in a park. Could we talk to the golf commission? Could we see if there is? I mean, if there's no political opposition, then maybe we could include it.
We could invite them to come to the public hearing.
Okay.
Give an opinion about it.
And if there's no, if there's no opposition to including the golf courses, we could, we could go ahead and protect everyone there as well.
Just make that part of the discussion we have on December 8th.
Thank you.
All right. Pete, you want to make a motion on these individually?
Yeah, I moved the introduction of both, well, we'd have to do them separately. I moved the introduction of 11A.
All right. Is there a second? Cast your votes. 11A is introduced.
And 11B.
And 11B. Is there a second? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously as well. Again, a public hearing December 8th. Final vote scheduled currently for December 22nd. Items from council. Mark, do you have anything else? John?
I just want to repeat what I said earlier. I see Scott is here. I just wanted to take the time out to thank Oklahoma City Public Schools for not allowing for another abandoned building in northeast Oklahoma City by utilizing the building on Lindsay and turning that into a central enrollment center. So again, thank you, Scott. And I said this earlier, that everybody at the school district has not been easy to work with, and I appreciate your willingness to work with the city. So again, thank you, Scott.
All right, Devin?
Thank you.
All right, Pete? Larry?
Just like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and encourage everybody to take a moment this Thursday and to thank the Blesser for the blessings that we enjoy here in Oklahoma City. Thank you, Your Honor.
Pete, Ed? James? All right, city manager reports.
Couple things this morning. First of all, the November sales tax check came in, and it was not strong. It was actually down 4.8% below last year's November, which was 5.4% below target. And so if you put that on an annual basis, where we're at for the year, for the five months that we've been in right now, we're actually nine tenths of a percent below last year's collections and 2.8% below target. We didn't have a strong target projected for this year, but we're actually below last year's collections. I think you all know that we have implemented a hiring freeze at this point in time. We've got a meeting this afternoon to take a look at some other things to make sure that we're taking proper measures as we go forward. It is uncertain economic times, and, you know, we're blessed to have, you know, to go follow up on the Thanksgiving theme, we're very blessed in Oklahoma City with the situation we have here. When you take a look at some of the things that the corporate world is going through, the oil companies with the price of oil, it bounced actually below $40 a barrel last week. I see this morning it's back up to about 43. And then the state with their, I don't know what number you want to use, 800 million, a billion, a billion two, I've heard all kinds of numbers out there for the state. You take a look at where we're at, down a couple of percent. That's bad. We're gonna have to do some things to adjust and accommodate that, but it's really not to the level that others in the community are suffering from financial hurt at this point in time. That being said, we still need to follow through and make some wise decisions here to go through the rest of the year. I'm sure we will end up the year in a bit of a deficit somehow along the line, and we'll cut into fund balance at some level after we took the $8 million for the resourcing a few months ago. That's still left us around the 13-plus percent in fund balance. So we're still in not bad shape for the year, but as we go into next year, you know, we think it's gonna be a tough year as we go forward. So it is what it is, and I think we're in pretty good shape to manage as we go forward. I wouldn't expect a robust '16, '17 budget year and an opportunity to add a lot of new services as we go forward for the next fiscal year.
Have we considered cutting taxes as a way to solve our budget?
That has not been approached. We've looked at it as other...
Perhaps we ought to look at that. It seems to be...
I'll get back to you on that.
The other thing is the budget, the fund balance you said now is at 13%, and that's after taking the 8 million out. Now, has the 8 million been spent yet?
It is not.
What do you predict the budget, the fund balance to be at the end of July?
Between 11 and 12% is my best estimate at this point in time. So it's within our range.
And that's still within our range?
Okay.
You ought to look at that tax cut. It seems to be a good idea to some folks.
Yeah, Larry?
On a more serious note, do you have a comment on where we stand on collections for MAPS III?
Well, MAPS III is in good shape. And MAPS III is in good shape because when we projected MAPS III, it was done coming out of the '08, '09 recession that we had. So we had a long, a low base. And so even with the sluggish collections at this point in time, we're still ahead of the collections that we projected back in '09 for MAPS III. And of course, we've had significant collections in excess of our projected, our projected earnings or revenues on that for the four or five years up to this date. So MAPS III is actually in very good shape.
Can I just ask where we are, or are we involved in the process in any way? Or how do things transpire over the next year in terms of the idea being floated of a one-cent sales tax for education? I mean, not, just from my standpoint, not only is that the most regressive tax, and it would make us have among the highest sales tax in the country, but that decision would have tremendous implications for cities, especially the city of Oklahoma City. If you were thinking about a future MAPS or a regional transit authority, I mean, all of these things are...
Jail.
Especially the jail. If you're the only state in America, in Oklahoma, where you don't have, can't access property tax for operations of your city, then floating a one-cent sales tax without having the city of Tulsa, city of Oklahoma City, city of Lawton, I mean, those who would provide the bulk of the sales tax in part of those discussions just doesn't seem...
First of all, it's really a complex issue, and it's probably one we're not gonna get to the bottom of this morning. But education has challenges. And I think we, you know, I think we all understand there are challenges in education. Money can probably fix some of them. There are some other things that need to be looked at in education, you know, some other things that need to be reviewed, and probably some efficiencies that can be arrived. But that being said, there are still things that probably need money to be addressed. I don't have the answer for the education challenges in the state of Oklahoma, but there are challenges out there, and some areas are underfunded. That being said, is the sales tax the best solution? Well, all the things you bring up are very relevant. We do have a high sales tax in the state of Oklahoma. We have other desires out there, whether they're transit, jail, other things that need to be going on down the line. And the fact that, as you mentioned, we have, our general fund is funded by sales tax, 50-some percent of our general fund is sales tax. We don't have the ability to get into a property tax for operations as almost every other state, as every other state in the United States. We don't have a income tax for our operations. And so it is a challenge. Our eggs in one basket. So there's a issue out there that what's the solution for education? And then there's, which is a hard, hard question to answer, but there's a broader question is how should the state tax revenues be allocated? What should we get? Which is a lot, lot harder issue than just the education issue out there. So these are significant policy issues, and a lot have been ingrained in our fabric for decades and decades and decades. I don't know when we gave up property taxes. Kenny, do you know? It was back in the 30s or 40s, I believe.
I don't really know. I honestly don't know, but it's at least the 50s, I think.
Yeah, it's been, you know, it's been a half century.
So the Supreme Court would make a decision on whether that's log-rolling, and you could put on a...
That's correct.
Assuming that they passed it, then would there be some kind of analysis by either the chamber? I mean, presumably, it could be the end of the MAPS program. Would there be some kind of analysis on the impact of the city of Oklahoma City to what that one-cent sales tax would mean in terms of economic development, economic activity, tax generation, employment?
There's obviously, there's some studies that have already been done and released on it by some independent groups in regard to it. You know, it's a political issue. There's some concerns that are out there that come from it and as to what our flexibility will be in the future. I think it will limit us. There's only so many sources of revenue, and this will put a stymie on all sales tax elections for all cities and counties as we go forward.
I do think the advice that the editorial board of the Oklahoman gave about waiting to make a decision until we find out what the Supreme Court says is good advice. I do, but I don't think that means we shouldn't be planning on what we're gonna do. I mean, I for one am gonna be opposed to it. I know how bad education needs the money, but this is not the way. It reminds me of the lottery, a campaign against the lottery that one time that was not this lottery. They didn't run against the lottery, they ran against that method of doing it. And I just don't see how we can tolerate it. But we've got, at the same time, we've got to fight for a better funding process across the board, which is a fight the state ought to be having. They ought, with a billion-dollar, perhaps, projected deficit, they ought to be fighting for a better funding process for themselves, and at the same time, looking at how money's distributed to all the sub-agencies. But that, as, in order, to defray any thoughts that I'm facetious about that is wrong. I'm not. I mean, that's, it's an absolute abdication of their responsibility. And we, but, but it is obvious to me they are going to continue to do that because it's politically successful for them. So they'll continue to do that. That means the burden's gonna fall on us. Oklahoma City's been the leader in how to solve, how to create a renaissance in the city, and we're gonna have to figure out a way to do it through this. And I'm absolutely possible, I'm convinced that we can do that. But we're gonna have to do it. I think we need to look it right straight in the eye and face it, because I think that's what's gonna happen. We're gonna have to be the ones to do it. And we can't do it by having our sales tax base eroded through any method, since it's our only. You know, we talked about it's only 50%, but what's the other 50% made up of? Fines?
Franchise fees, fines, implements.
Okay. A big portion of it's fines. I mean, we want to be like these little bandit communities that have to raise fines high enough to support the Police Department?
Well, and the fines are, we can only have as high as we can repeat the cost.
I understand, but, I mean, those are the kind of options we're being left with, is what I'm saying. So I think it's a misnomer to talk about that half of our money comes, because really, the half that we can control, the funds we control are substantially more than 50%. We're not about to use fines as a way to do it.
Well, franchise fees is another major source, and that's not adjustable either.
Right. So almost realistically, 100% of our operating money, or very close to 100% of our operating funds, come from the sales tax.
Discretionary.
And we don't have any control over that, over the, we will lose total control if we let somebody else start to appropriate the money for it. It's a, anyway. This has been my day for the pulpit.
On a more positive note, yesterday, Moody's advised the Oklahoma City Water Utilities Trust that the credit rating has been updated to a AAA with stable outlook. Now, we've been a AA1 with Moody's over the years. Standards and Poor's, we have been a AAA, but going to both double-rated AAA for the Water Utilities Trust credit is a significant event, specifically during this time of economic unrest and world political unrest, to get it upgraded.
That is impressive.
Like, that is significant. And that will, of course, mean that when Aqua would issue's dead, it will be at the lowest possible interest rate forward, and that's, as they're going forward with some major capital improvements, including the Etoka Pipeline, paralleling that. This is gonna be a very positive thing, having the highest credit ratable.
Yeah, I mean, that's millions of dollars, I would assume, in a billion dollar multi-year loan.
So both, you know, the city is rated AAA now with Moody's and Standard and Poor's, now the Water Utilities Trust is rated AAA.
Congratulations. I appreciate your work on that.
You know, that really is good news, remind me of something else. I wasn't going to shut up, but you know how that goes for me. I've been invited this afternoon to do a video recording to be shown at a, at a presentation of honor, of an honorary doctorate of former city manager Terry Childers at Abilene Christian University. And this, talking about this rating of the, of this water utility reminds me of how all that happened in the first place. When Terry was brought here as a city manager, he was very, very interested in enterprise systems. He brought in Jim Couch, and together, they created the system that we're now, is now probably as good a system as there is in the country. I just happened to be there when it, when it happened. I was there when the baby was born, but I had nothing to do with it one way or another. But it's a commentary on how long that's been in process. That's not a brand new thing. It started in the late 80s when we were in the depth of really, really terrible situation. We hired Terry, Terry hired Jim, and the rest is now probably as good, probably as good as any bond rating for any public utility in the, in the country, I would think. I can't imagine it being higher than that. And I personally appreciate all that, all that work.
Well, it can be higher, that's as high, what we have is as high as you can get.
Okay.
You know, I pointed out to trustees last night in an email that when I was Water Utilities Director for 13 years, I think the highest rating we got was a AA minus. And so in the last 15 years, and at that time, the city was a AA. And so in the last 15 years, the city's gone from a AA up to a AAA.
So we got you out of there, and the rating, is that what you're drawing up?
Exactly the point. And, and the Water Utilities Trust went from a AA minus up to a AAA over, over that 15-year period. So that's pretty strong.
But those rating changes don't happen overnight. They happen incrementally. They happen one at a time. And that has started then and has continued to today. I mean, it's not a, it's a long-term process. Don't, don't fail to take partial, part of the credit for it, Mr. City Manager. You've done a really great job, and I appreciate it.
All right, any other comments from council? City manager reports have been extinguished. Joe Nelson, Joe, you want to come up and speak today?
This is going to be a gift to you when I bring it back. Joe Sars Nelson, I've been here before, many times, and it will kind of ease your thoughts of mine. After today, it'll be about two or three months before I come back. I'm going to have two surgeries. If I get through the second one, I'll be back to fight you some more. Okay? Anyway, I'm going to bring up kind of a sore subject, but a funny one, anyway. Three things I'm going to mention today is about the big projects in Oklahoma City on the MAPS. During my tenure coming to City Hall, it's in my notes here, it was a big hubbub back in the election days, let's put it that way, between Mr. Besdek, Councilman Shadib, a lot of name-calling, yelling, things of that nature. One man could have stepped up to the microphone and cleared all of it, and that was Mr. Lackmire, but he never did do anything like that. But anyway, y'all did do one thing for me, made me feel real good about it. Remember your mixed folly thing? You got a big laugh out of that? The rails that went nowhere. Okay, well, now I notice that they're going to be changed. And you ought to see Mr. Besdek's face. I saw it in the Gazette, and I've never seen a man look so stunned in all my born days. It was really kind of comical. He looks plum stunned in that picture, like, I won't say it, but what's going on? The only thing that bothered me about all of it was, that was in the November 11th Gazette, but in the 21st, Saturday's paper, New Klumon. Mr. Lackmire's feeling an awful lot of questions concerning all kinds of things that has to do with the MAPS project. And the only big gripe I got is that Ferris wheel, which I brought up before. Councilwoman Meg Salier said that the former mayor was bringing it into Oklahoma City, and I was led to believe that the council, I may be wrong, I thought the city bought that Ferris wheel. Good, that's a good, denial of it, I'll buy that. Anyway, every time I read the Klumon, there's always something about the city's government and its so-called partners in part, and I say that very clearly in part, but I will say it's clear to the straight out that some months back, and I do mean quite a number, about the heated debate that I spoke about, and I was surprised that Mr. Lackmire didn't step up to the microphone and clear the air, which he never did. Now, I've read in the paper, which I stay on top of a lot of the city projects, one about the rails being in jeopardy. That's not a hidden issue, everybody read it. Even when I saw, I've even got a document, cut the ad out where Mr. Greenwell was riding on the bus, telling the people they ought to ride the bus. Before I go any further with this thing here, it would get kind of ugly, and since Thanksgiving's right around the corner, I'd just soon leave it alone. And if you want to see it, it does get ugly. The thing being is, we don't need that streetcar. Even the CEO, Mr. Nichols, said we didn't need it. If we put one-fifth of the money that's been invested in that rail system into the rail, the bus he ridden, that rode on, those buses can go places, the rails will not be able to go. In the future, I think the rails is a fine thing. I used to ride on that Santa Fe going to Poncasay and all that to visit my folks. It's a nice thing, but it costs too much. And we're a little city. We're not like Boston and Detroit and all the cities in California that's got them going all over the place. They can afford them, we can't. We'll be in the red from the time we start till after it's all over and they quit. We tore the rails out once before we're down in Brick Down because they weren't going to serve no legal purpose, or not legal, but a financial purpose. Oklahoma City's not going to be able to recover. The other things, possible. I'm not too hip on a hotel convention center and everything like that, because after that thing down at Fred Jones' place down there, and nobody ever knew how much it really cost, that bothered me a little bit. Might have a good thing going there. The boulevard's coming around. My biggest problem with some of the project is certain members, I won't say who, I know one, I brought it to the public's attention before, buying property and working for the city of Oklahoma City is against the law. It's against our own charter rules. I won't name names, you already know who they are. Go back in your own records. I resent that. I think the party should step down from being a council person, because you don't buy land for 7,500 and sell it back to Oklahoma City for $101,000. That's a pretty tidy sum. But twice? First time might have been a mistake, the second one wasn't. And the person didn't need the money anyway, they want half a Broadway, all the way up to 13th anyway. Now, that's neither here nor there. But I'm going to end my story. I'll give you this as a gift. You, I know it ain't going to go up in your wall, but, but anyway. I won't be here for a while, Mr. Sossen Soffer. I hear you from time to time. I hope you win your election. I do pay attention. You look good in the newspaper. In person, I have different stories about it. Mr. Greenwell, you look good on the bus. Ms. Kersey, we have our ups and downs, but I love you to death as a person. Mayor, you try hard. It wouldn't be stupid for me to ask if you'd try a little harder. And you, he finally got where, he smiles at me all the time when I come in here, and that's rare, but I do admire that. And Mr. Jordan, I see him on the street pretty often, and he's always friendly, courtesy. And Pete White is one of my favorites. I do enjoy talking to him when I get the chance, which is very rare. I don't get to see him very often. I see McAtee from time to time. He don't look like he could scold me too often. And Mr. Shadib, I see he recovered from the balling out in City Hall, and, well, never mind, I ain't going to worry about John, he's too busy playing with his cellphone. But anyway, y'all have a nice Thanksgiving, have a safe one. We're supposed to have some bad weather if you keep hold of the news. But anyway, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, just set it right down there, Joe. I'll take it out. And good luck on your surgeries. Wish you the best. William Gonzalez?
William Gonzalez, 801 Caroline Drive, Yukon, Oklahoma. I read an article the other day about the integrity investigation of the state of Oklahoma, and of course, we failed, and I could have told them that. As this council knows, I brought to you a complaint that the city inspector okayed the installation job in the attic of my new home, missed the fact that it did not meet the building code for city of Oklahoma City. I was told by the inspector that it was not their job to make sure that it was done properly, just that it was done. And then he told me that he had no way to know what the R-value was. I told him to get a ruler and measure the depth, that's how you figure it out. Nothing done from y'all. I then showed this council pictures and proof from the state mechanical code book that AC Systems across the street from me did not meet the state mechanical code. I was then threatened by the city chief mechanical inspector, Jerry King, that I could be fined $25,000 for impersonating an inspector. I didn't impersonate one, I just brought up what they missed. Nothing done by y'all. I also brought to the attention of the council the fact that I had made a formal complaint to the police department of criminal actions of two cops from the Hefner Station. I told Councilman McAtee of my concern that police would sweep it under the rug. Councilman McAtee told me, said not to worry. To whom do the police give the investigation of wrongdoing? Lieutenant Pisano, the cop that stopped my son first. Nothing done. It was swept under the rug. My councilman, Mr. Griner, has not tried to do anything for me, nothing. Councilman Shadib is very nice and been helpful, tried to do something, nothing done. Well, y'all are going to enjoy this. I have a medical condition that prevents me from continuing this fight on this stage. So I have a message for Jerry King, Lieutenant Pisano, Officer Brian Poole, city manager and the mayor.
And we have executive session, we'll be back.